Good evening. Welcome to the September 10, 2024 regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. My name is Richard Wells. I'm the chair. I'm joined tonight in person by Vice Chair Roxanne Musto, Secretary John Cohen, member Erin Bradley, and we're joined on Zoom by member Benjamin Zoll. Good evening, Ben. Can you hear me all right, Ben? Just raise your hand if that's a yes.
You're actually a little quiet, Richard.
Bringing it up close. I've been hearing this a lot lately, but I'm a little quiet.
It was quiet from last time.
Yeah. So I'd like to begin by asking everyone present to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we go to item three on the agenda, which is public comment, I'd just like to take a moment to make note of tomorrow is a significant date in American history. Twenty-three years ago tomorrow, 2,997 men, women, and children woke up, like most of us do. At the end of the day, they would all have died in a horrific terrorist attack. The attack that I refer to was pretty much etched into the mind of anyone who lived that day, especially adults, and that was the attacks of 9/11. So I'd like to begin tonight by asking all of us present and those at home to honor those lost on that fateful day with a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item three. Do we have anyone present for public comment? Anyone on the phone for public comment? I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone, Mr. Zoll? Moving on, we're going to go to item number four, which is a discussion approval for Milton Glows Gold Proclamation. And I would like to invite from the Milton Glows Gold Committee, Kalise Johnson, to please join us.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. Kalise Johnson, Catherine Road here in Milton. I am on the board of the Michael McHugh Foundation. And so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll take just about two minutes. So Milton Glows Gold was created by the Michael McHugh Foundation. Sorry, need my glasses. To raise awareness for kids battling cancer and to support families with financial assistance. The MCM Fund has received more requests than any year this year. You can support us, help support every request that comes our way by joining Milton Glows Gold. So this year is special. We are honoring the memory of Emily L. Butt, Cunningham student, who passed away at the age of eight on February 27, 2024, after a courageous battle with leukemia. Emily's vibrant spirit and infectious smile were a gift to all who knew her during her precious eight years of life. So there are many ways to support Milton Glows Gold. You can join the jumping jack challenge, get this great T-shirt as I am displaying here. You can pledge to do jumping jacks through the month. Our goal is to do 15,780 jumping jacks, which represents each child diagnosed with cancer in this country each year. So you can visit the website at miltonglowsgold.org to learn how. You can ask family and friends to sponsor you to complete your jumping jacks. You can challenge your friends to join you in the challenge, and you can make a donation yourself and ask your company to do the same. So the 19th will be Milton Glows Gold in the Milton Public Schools, so all the kids in the elementary school will be doing jumping jacks. On the 27th will be Milton Glow Gold Day in town, which we are very grateful for. The football game will be our Milton Glows Gold celebration, and there was also a blood drive that day at Cunningham Hall. So the Milton, the Michael McHugh Foundation is eternally grateful to the Milton Public Schools admin, staff, and students, as well as our goat sponsor, the Fruit Center. So thank you for this proclamation today from the Select Board in the town to support Milton Glows Gold, and we are eternally grateful. So thank you.
Nice job. I told you you could have 20 minutes. You didn't even come close. Questions, comments?
Yeah, sorry. I missed a couple of dates and numbers. How many jumping jacks do we have to do?
15,780. It represents each child diagnosed with cancer in the country each year.
That is an astounding number.
It is astounding. I myself know four children, two survivors, and two who have passed. And I can say from growing up, I remember one child. So to me, it's, I mean, it's very sad. So we're very lucky to be able to take this opportunity to make some awareness and support for the families.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, I got a date wrong, I'm sure. But when you said the 27th, is that the 27th of September or October?
Yes, September. September is childhood cancer awareness through the country.
Okay. And I was just looking at one further thing. I know that the 27th you said is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's just a question about the date.
No.
The 27th is the football game, is that correct? The 26th is a soccer game.
Fabulous.
So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can loop in more teams to try and do this instead of just the football team. I know football is great, but not, but not everybody is a football person. So if we could loop in more folks, I'm wondering if we could work with the athletic director, maybe, to try and get more teams to do these jumping jacks, because I personally cannot do 15,780.
Yes, and we fully support any teams that want to raise money, raise awareness. I would say the Milton Girls Soccer Team was our biggest fundraiser last year.
Look at the girls go.
So we definitely open it up. I've already spoken with Michael Beeter with.
Perfect.
Yes, we're definitely open, and National Honor Society has been involved in the past as well as the Drama Kids.
Thank you so much, and I thank you for doing this.
Roxanne, go ahead, Ms. Musto. Thank you. Just a quick thing. Thank you for what you're doing. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I think one case of childhood cancer is too many. So really, it's a wonderful event that you're doing. I love the fact that you're bringing the kids and the groups in, so it hits home a little bit with them as well, instead of just always adults doing these kinds of things. So I really want to just commend you and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zoll, you okay, Mrs. Zoll? I just, I was waiting.
Thanks, Mr. Wells. Just a quick thank you for this work. I think we said this last year, or I said this last year when it was Glows Gold last year, but having worked at Boston Children's Hospital for many years and, you know, been to the sixth floor, which is the oncology, pediatric oncology ward, more times than, you know, many people, it's pediatric cancer is something that needs continual awareness and support. And I would like to encourage anybody who's listening or watching, if you can't donate blood on the 27th, you can always go to Boston Children's Hospital and donate blood. They always need blood. A lot of it is for cancer patients. And I have a dear friend right now who's dealing with a pediatric leukemia diagnosis. And I would also encourage folks to, you can, you can sign up to be a stem cell donor for kids that are dealing with stem cell cancer or leukemia. It's not always the case that parents can be donors to their kids. It's very painless, doesn't involve any blood. You just swab your cheek and you get into a registry. But to do that, you need to be under 40 years old. So, you know, bring that to folks' attention. If you're over 40, like I am, that folks can register to be on a list. Or my friend's daughter is, you know, fortunately matched with somebody who is out of state, but they're going to be able to do the transplant. So it's an incredible cause, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. So clearly, this is very important, as you know. Michael was Molly's, my Molly's classmate, I believe. Michael's funeral may have been the first funeral that she ever attended. He was very young.
Same as my children. My son was a pallbearer.
First funeral I ever went to. And you've done incredible work to the, to beyond this, to one of the points that Mr. Zoll made, giving blood is really critical. And I, for most of my life, I was not able to, and I've been able, I think it's only been four years, but I give a children's regularly. And one of the good things about giving blood is the more you give it, the faster it is. So I can do a pint now in about 13 minutes. I mean, it just. You're in and out. But there were the platelets, you can do double reds, all of these things are really, really, really important. And, you know, no one ever wants to hear the word cancer, and especially a child never wants to hear the word cancer, or a parent wants, never wants to hear it. And so keep doing your incredible work. Come back. We'll find a way, maybe we'll do jumping jacks here if I can challenge my colleagues here. So I'm getting some dirty looks here, but.
You have a baby.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, let me read this. I'll read this, and then we'll give you a nice one, but I have it, so I'll read it tonight on behalf of the board. So this is a proclamation for Milton Glows Gold. It is a tongue twister, no matter how many times I say it. Whereas the Michael C. McHugh Memorial Fund was founded to honor the life of Michael McHugh, a Milton teen who lost his battle to cancer in the summer of 2017. The fund provides low-income families with everyday needs, from basic living to school supplies. It also supports families who have lost a child to enable them to afford funeral, memorial, and non-medical end-of-life expenses. Whereas September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and in September 2019, the Michael C. McHugh Memorial.
Recording in progress.
Launched Milton Glows Gold as a way to raise awareness of the realities of childhood cancer. The generosity and enthusiasm displayed by the fund's partners, the business community, and the participants for the Milton Glows Gold continue to exceed expectations. Since its inception, the MCM Fund has raised more than $150,000 to support families as well as organizations that provide respite during and after treatment, such as RUTS Roost, the Children's Room, and Experience Camps. And whereas Milton Public Schools is a proud partner in Milton Glows Gold, the events serve as a way to bring students, families, and staff together to honor Michael and raise awareness about an important cause. Milton Public Schools and the community at large participate in Milton Glows Gold in so many ways, including wearing their MGG or gold quote swag, collecting coins to donate, and registering for that quote jumping jack challenge now in its second year. Milton Glows Gold participants are encouraged to put gold ribbons on their doors and lights in their windows to show their support. Now therefore, we, the Select Board, proclaim Friday, September 27, 2024, is Milton Glows Gold Day in honor of Michael C. McHugh. Given this day Tuesday, September 10, 2024, signed by the Chair on behalf of the Select Board, Richard G. Wells Jr., Roxanne Musto, John C. Cohen, Erin G. Bradley, and Benjamin Zoll. Thank you very much, and continue your very important and dedicated work.
Fabulous.
And this is just the incentive I need. I've been meaning to give, so this will make me do it.
Oh, great. We look forward to your participation.
So before you leave, I'm going to make a motion to approve this proclamation for Milton Glows Gold.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Musto. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It's unanimous. You're free to go.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Number six, item number six is discussion approval comment. No, 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 it's not. Discussion approval designed for Wharf Park improvements, support for the application for CPA Preservation Act funding. Mr. McKay, former park commissioner, Scott McKay, and are you president of Milton? I don't even know what's the title. So I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Sure. My name is Scott McKay. I'm a former park commissioner, and I'm on the board of the Milton Farmers Market and the Friends of Milton Recreation.
I'm Bill Madden, landscape architect with Gregory Lombardi Design, and also a Milton resident at Six Elias Lane.
And on the Shade Tree Committee.
And on the Shade Tree Committee.
That's what I need to add tonight, so you can, if we can. I want a time constraint tonight. I want to pitch count.
All right. We'll try to make it quick then. Thank you for having us to talk about the Wharf Park project. This has been something that's been talked about for probably three or four years now, and it's just starting to come into its own and finish up the design, and hopefully we can move the project forward within this next year. But several years ago, just to give folks at home some history, the folks on the Select Board have been to several public meetings that we've held, so they have a pretty good understanding of the project. But just to give you a little bit of history, several years ago, the Farmers Market discussed the potential of moving the market to another location based on the unsafe conditions down at Wharf Park. The topography there, the slope there, exposed root systems of the trees there have made it pretty unsafe for folks who are attending the market, but also for any extended use, active or passive, by other folks in the community. So around the same time, the Master Plan Implementation Committee released their study on the waterfront, the revitalization of the waterfront and the surrounding neighborhood of Milton Village. So the idea of rehabilitating Wharf Park in context with that as being one of the cornerstones of the neighborhood kind of, the light shined for us, and that was the idea that was, that was born. So Wharf Park is under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. So the board of the Farmers Market, the Friends of Milton Recreation, and the Town Administrator and Select Board put in an application for CPC money, $25,000 grant. And starting in March, we had a series of six public meetings to really envision what this park could be. In order to be as productive as possible, our landscape architect put together three, essentially three concepts, and if you go to the next slide, we might be able to see that. Three design concepts, just to start the conversation, what did people like, what did people not like? And through a series of meetings, most folks kind of gravitated towards the third option here, but there were some issues with it still, and you can see the likes and dislikes of each option above. But based on those six meetings, there were really five different primary design concepts that came to light, and I just want to highlight those. Open space, open green space and planted areas. We wanted to, or the community really wanted to keep as much of the area of green space in the park as possible. Create a pollinator garden for beauty and ecological improvements, and either keep or implement new tree plantings for natural shade and habitat. The second was a focus on safety and security, again, making the park level so folks could navigate the park, creating an accessible park for all folks of able-bodied folks, level the walkways, and add some lighting to the area. And kind of the biggest point that people focused on in the first series of meetings was functionality, to try to design a park that really invited additional active and passive use, but also to have it be flexible enough to accept as many practical uses as possible. So again, folks mentioned open space for community gatherings, a better design layout for the Farmers Market, lawn seating for music and theater events, all the potential for those, some connections for power and plumbing, casual seating alternatives like picnic tables, benches, seat walls, accommodate potentially a space for some storage or a public restroom, including bike racks, and to try to minimize the maintenance requirements on the park, to make it as natural as possible, but also keep the costs of maintenance low. From there, we had a meeting with our planning board, and they came up with two more basic design concepts that really took our option three and made it to what it, to what it is today. And Bill will show us those renderings. The design concept that they came up was connectivity, to create pedestrian connections from the MBTA and businesses on Adam Street, a stairway connection from the historic, or a connection to the stairway that's on Adam, from Adam Street down to the park, and to create a design in context with the other parks that are already there, the public spaces of the waterfront. And finally, the last point was the orientation of the park, and whether folks are there for the market, picnicking, or community events, the design, to design the park with the orientation and views towards the water. Some of these initial options did not consider that. And to really highlight one of Milton's kind of unseen natural resources in the Napontet River. So from there, these guys went back to the drawing board and came up with the design. You'll see.
So, well, first of all, thanks for having me. I have to say that the collaborative process that we had with all the different groups was spectacular. We had passionate Milton residents that hated some of our ideas, but we listened, and I think that we came up with a really, I'm saying great, not us, but I think the town as a whole, we came up with a great design that sort of touched on a lot of different topics that people were interested in. We, I think, as landscape architects, for this project, we were almost facilitators more than designers, and we sort of facilitated the process. Nick, if you could go to the next slide. So this is where we landed. And Richard, you were at some of the meetings.
I was.
And I don't think you saw where we landed. I know Roxanne.
No, but I had a good idea when we left.
Okay.
The last sidewalk at the Wharf where you were going.
That was.
And I'm not surprised by what I see tonight.
So to give you guys context, are you understanding sort of where you are? You're sort of almost like floating above Adam Street right now, sort of looking towards the water. 88 Wharf, you know, is in the backdrop, the train is on your left, and the yacht club is on the right. If you go to the next slide, this is going to be old-fashioned. I'm going to ask for next slide if that's okay. Scott talked about the connection from the Adam Street set of steps, so we've looked at that and sort of made this more sinuous connection from Adam Street. We do, we think that this was designed, or at least conceived of, by Frederick Olmsted or his kids. So historically, it's very important. Richard, you mentioned at the very, I think, one of the first meetings that we had, maybe the first public meeting, that the, there should be an acknowledgement of the history of the park, and you're going to see how we're suggesting we do that, which we thought was a really great idea. There's also other sort of striped connections showing the relationship of providing pedestrian access to the park. The pedestrian access on the sort of upper slide, or the upper section of the slide here, that's the ADA connection. So everything is flat, and that was one of the drivers with all of the design decisions that we were making here, is to make it compliant and safe for people with mobility challenges, the elderly, visual issues. So we've leveled this, this area so it's, can accommodate all different types of users. If we go to the next slide. This is a diagram, just to sort of start the conversation about how it could potentially be used. The market was a true driver in this. It wasn't the only reason for the park, because as Scott did say, that, you know, the multifunctional aspects of this is important. The orange, the colors are a little muted here, but the orange boxes are indicating where vendors would be. So they essentially would sort of ring the central lawn, and then potential buyers of the goods would be on the sidewalks. And you can sort of just imagine, the arrows on the right, if someone is in a chair, they could easily access the park and access all the vendors, which we love, because we love that idea that we can sort of provide a safe environment for those, that type of use. On the upper section of the park, that's where we're preserving one of the existing trees. One of the big drivers, too, was there's two trees on site, and we were concerned, the options showed removal of two trees, keep one tree, and then keep both trees. To accommodate the, we'll say, flatness of the site, we had to remove the large oak tree. So right now, we're proposing to remove that one and invest in the protection and preservation of the, it's an oak beach that is existing there currently, that is in great health, and it'll provide great shade for the users of the park. That's also the location where we're proposing to have a more of a garden-type, a native garden-type experience there.
I think I might, not to interrupt you, but I think, because this was, I found this, I was very impressed when you were able to provide this information regarding the oak tree, that the life, the life of it is very short.
We.
Like it's near its end of its life now.
We've had a series of conversations with multiple people, and the, you know, we look at it as a, from a town investment standpoint, we want to make the investment for this park that's 40, 50 years, and to design around a tree that's in decline and failing, that's probably has 10 to 15 years left, we didn't think that would be the right solution. And so to put additional preservation, not to get into technical components, but deep root fertilization and all that sort of steps to take to make the existing tree healthy, that was sort of the balance. So we're trying to sort of balance safety with the ecological preservation of the site. If we go to the next slide, it's really just a series of, this is sort of the rendering. On your, on your right, that is, that was really the driver from the planning board sidewalk, not only the circle, but also this sort of element to the, sorry, to the left of the plan. There's an existing wall that's there that's failing, and so we've been discussing, do we want to make an investment into building a new wall, which we can imagine, $100,000 along that new edge, or we have to reassemble this wall? The repair, the cost of that repair would be significant. So when we had the planning board meeting, it was actually a light bulb went off. When they said, let's redirect views to the water, we said, this is an opportunity then for us to use that as sort of an amphitheater seating space. So we're burming up against the wall to keep it in place, and we don't have to remove it or add a new wall, so we're going to softscape that environment for sitting. And then also along that edge, to sort of screen and remove the cars from that experience of the park, we're suggesting that there be a hedge planting there as well. And then these rest, the rest of the images are picked, the perspective of views, so you can get a sense of sort of that ground level layer. If we go to the next slide, Nick. These are the elements that I was just sort of pointing out, the sloped observation lawn, which is a sloping sort of amphitheater condition, the open green space, which is a level, flat lawn space, ornamental trees to help screen this green space from the street on your left side, and, you know, views to the water. Richard, your point about the history of the site, you can sort of see, we have this little threshold, and we could see that would be a great opportunity to have a narrative or some sort of plaque to describe the importance of this space for the town of Milton, and maybe even a bigger sort of leap in terms of its impact on, you know, the state. If we go to the next slide, yeah, we'll go to the next slide. This is fine. So I'm just going to walk you around the project. So this, the set of steps that this person is going up on the left side is going up to Wharf Street. And the background is the sloped lawn with the evergreens that are screening the trees along the back of those businesses, and then the lawn is to your right. And then the tree in the background is the existing one that we're going to keep. If we go to the next slide. This is one of my sort of favorite views, because it's coming from the train, and I think that based on the feedback that we've gotten from the many meetings that we've been in, we wanted to touch all the edges of this park in a very sensible way, and sort of think about all the different angles you could enter the park. So this is a sort of a set of picnic tables with a native garden, and then also a series of trees for additional shade for the users of the marketplace or any other events that the town might have here. We're also encouraging alternative. We're also encouraging alternative access to the site, so there's, would be bike parking that's illustrated on the left of this view. If you go to the next slide. This is the set of steps from, we'll call it the sweeping Adam Street stair. And we've also just started to mock up the idea of the market. Again, just so we can start to help visualize what it would look like. If we go to the next slide. This is the view from 88 Wharf Street. You're entering the park with these sort of beautiful granite piers with the idea of the sort of historic narrative or plaque that might be on both sides to sort of announce, maybe there's a naming opportunity for this park. But I think acknowledging the history would be amazing. If we go to the next slide. Actually, you know what? Let's, one second, if we go back to this. This is important to me. It's a very technical thing. But if you see on the right side of this, where the sidewalk is, you can see that slope down to the sidewalk. That is how, and I just want you guys to understand, that is how we're making this landscape flat. So we're cutting and we're filling. So we're trying to minimize, again, cost from taking any material offsite and just use it here so we can maximize our investment. If we go to the next slide. Again, this is just sort of trying to illustrate the character. You can see the market vendors in the background beyond the little garden. There's picnic tables. If we go to the next slide. And so we have this interesting idea, and it was sort of, we started discussing it at the last public meeting. We would love for this space to be, you know, used, you know, shade is important. And so, as you guys probably know, Trillium is probably the closest example. Trillium Brewery, which has these sort of tensile structure shade elements that sort of create that. The scale of this, that tent is quite large. And so we would need to think about the realities of achieving this, and maybe it's half of the lawn. But the concept of making this a, sort of a sculptural element that would also sort of entice people to come here, and then also provide shade, could be quite unique. If we go to the next slide, Nick. This is, you're starting to see what that could feel like. We had a really great meeting. Scott, I'm not sure if you mentioned the arts group. And they were very excited about the idea of engaging with this outdoor space. And so, again, we're showing more of like a bandstand configuration. It might be more discreet and modest than that. But again, the idea that it could be a place where, you know, larger groups could come and habitate. This, the one thing I didn't point out was, we are proposing that there would be sight lighting in the park as well, and then the poles would be used for this shade structure.
The anchors, yeah.
Yeah.
Navara has one of these that they use on their, they've erected it, I think, the last two summers in their wine, beer and wine guide at Milton Music Fest. So they're gaining popularity everywhere. I think the lawn on D and so forth.
The lawn on D is the perfect example.
Has one, yeah.
So it's powerful. That space is amazing. I mean, and then the further conversation that we'll get into with the town and, you know, once technical drawings start to get developed is how and when do we program this? And I know we need to be sensitive to the 88 Wharf residents, and they'll probably be number one on the list in terms of sensitivity. But at the same time, to make this successful and to make it a destination, outdoor destination for the residents, we would need to sort of consider that about how to activate it. The next slide is the, I believe it's a night view. But you could sort of really, this could be a really great environment for the town. And I do have to say, it has been a pleasure working with the different groups that have come out to participate. And like I said, some were more passionate about certain aspects of the park, and that's what makes it fun.
You get an A in patience.
Over years, I've built up a pretty, pretty thick callus. But, but it's been a pleasure, and thanks for, you know, attending those meetings. Everybody's feedback. Now, I think that was, is this the final slide?
So, I think I see, I think I see Mr. Zoll as a hand up, but I can't, I only see, Mr. Zoll, I think I see the tips of your fingers. I can't see you. So going to questions and comments, Mr. Zoll, go ahead.
I didn't want to jump the gun, but.
No, that's okay.
As Mr. McKay knows, I'm passionate about this project. Just a quick question on this. And first of all, congratulations on a beautiful design. And I think this is a great compromise between making this safe for folks to walk around, because right now it is not, and while also maintaining that great beech tree. So I'm really delighted to see that. In terms of, one of the schematics had power outlets available, and I know that sometimes the bands need electricity. I'm wondering if there are, and then with the bandstand that you had there at the end, having electrical available for that would be great. And did I miss the electrical on this?
You did not.
I'm guessing that's why we're going back to the slide.
You did not. I didn't say it. But yes, there is power. We will have, you know, plug-in opportunities. The other item that I did not speak to was the, this box that Nick just sort of pulled up for us on the top left, the concept of a, you know, a bathroom or storage area. And so, as we all know, this power, lighting, plumbing, it all is connected to budgets. And so, you know, we've also talked about, you know, possible ways of phasing this project and the appropriateness of phasing it. But in terms of the concept and the master plan, yes, power outlets would be very important for this.
And just to, just to keep in mind, this is conceptual drawings. There's a lot of steps for construction drawings that will include that. But it's a heck of a lot less expensive to put conduit in the ground and get it ready for plumbing and make the decisions downstream as to if we're going to tap into that or not. But definitely, those things are going to be considered in the final construction.
Thank you both again. I appreciate it.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This looks wonderful and fabulous. I'm still bummed we're not at Lincoln Street, but you know that, Mr. McKay. I have an interesting question. We currently have the East Milton deck, which has no shade at all. And so I'm wondering if there's a way that we could try, I don't think that we could put shade here without considering shade for the deck. And so, to be honest with you, this shade issue on the deck is something that has been swirling for multiple years. We were supposed to have, you know, a pergola. We were supposed to have all these things. Nothing came to fruition, and now it is, you know, basically, you go out there and you bake, like I used to in the 80s with baby oil. But, but we don't want to, we don't want to put something ahead of something that's been waiting for shade, is what I'm trying to figure out. Now, I understand that you probably have different money sources, and that's phenomenal. But I don't want to forget the deck and their concerns, and the Art Center's concerns, because they also were looking to get shade at that point to which I said they should go across. And anyways, so we need to not forget those other places that need shade. As I looked at that, that's why I looked at you, and I smiled, because I was like, oh, mhm, you're going to get it, and they're not. And so I just want us to be conscious as a select board and as whatever bodies, that there are multiple places that need shade, not just here, which there's plenty of shade at the end of Lincoln Street. I'd just like to point out again. So, so there's that. The other thing that I wanted to ask is about the restrooms, which I think is fabulous, because right now, the Milton Yacht Club is the one that is supplying our restrooms. They get no funding for the toilet paper, which is very important to more than half the population of this town. Well, maybe all the population, depending on what you're using the bathroom floor. And they don't get any help in taking care of that. So I really appreciate the fact that you guys are looking to put in some type of facilities that would be under the control of a different department than the Milton Yacht Club that cleans that bathroom and doesn't get any credit for it. So I want, those are my two points. I love this. I love the fact that the lawn is actually accessible for multiple people. And my father, many of you know, lives with me. He had two hip replacements, and so he could never go to the farmer's market. He tried once years ago and couldn't do it. So I'm really looking forward to this, so that we don't have elders and our seniors in our town afraid to go there and purchase vital food and organic stuff. So thank you all for that.
Maybe if I could just sort of touch on that? So that's a really great comment. And we had, you know, there's, there's ongoing feedback that we're getting, and that's, I'm glad you mentioned that, because another opportunity for us here, you know, the design process will be, we'll engineer posts, and then we'll look at some tensile structure. And if we're telling Scott that we're going to have to spend $200,000 for a tensile structure, he's going to be like, that's not going to work. So then we're going to have to come up with other strategies. And, you know, if we're thinking about the quality of the life of the people that are going to the park, we might have to use, we might have to plant some additional trees on the edge. So there's nothing sort of, this is sort of conceptually the direction that we are. And so as we start to develop it, we're going to be, we're going to have our thumb in the cost side of it and also the constructibility side of it. So those are all of those sort of things. Like, right now, this is sort of like, we wanted to, it was important for us to share this, because this is really a function of everybody's input, but there's still a lot of refining that needs to happen.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. So I attended the last meeting as well that had this whole presentation on it. Variety of people were there. But I think it's really, really a great plan, and I think you did a fabulous job of incorporating so many different opinions of what should be there and how it should look. So I'm very pleased with that. I think it's really important, as was mentioned earlier, to have an area, first of all, that's flat, that everybody can access, because that is a problem. And whether you're old or young, or maybe you twisted your ankle, and now you want to go down there and get something, you know, it's difficult the way it is with the tree roots and everything as well. So I think that's dynamite. I love the fact that you have sort of flipped it around more facing towards the water aspect. I think that's great. Shade is really important for everybody. Couple of things that I wanted to touch on. One is this came up at the meeting, and I know you had discussed this, the maintenance of the area. I know we didn't talk about it here, but I think that's important for people to realize that this may be an easier plan than some of the other plans in terms of maintenance. Lighting, I think there were people from 88 Wharf, and obviously would work with them on lighting of the area, it sounded like. And as far as bathroom facilities, there was somebody who had mentioned, who lived at 88 Wharf, that there is some issue with the sewer. There's some kind of an issue with that.
The elevation.
It's the elevation. So that's been the, going all the way back to the NPIC work of 2015, installing some type of public restroom in this area has been.
Challenge?
No, it's been a topic of concern to do it, both for those who use the waterfront and for here, a public in town. But it is unique in that, because 88 Wharf is so low, all the sewers gets pumped up to Adam Street. Which is, it's not the only place in town that that happens, but it's just one of them. So it is, but I don't think this would be that big of a lift on it, just.
Just to piggyback on that, too, there's enough space there, you know, we could arrange that in a lot of different fashions. There can be temporary facilities that are there that we could possibly use. But also, you know, I think there's enough folks with their ear to the ground that the, the old lockup facility does have some money for some rehabilitation of that space as well. So I think in concert, the select board controls that property as well. So again, there can be some discussion between the different projects to say, all right, well, who wants to tackle the concept of a bathroom? And should it be on this side, or should it be part of the other project? That's still to be decided.
Could be both. I mean, depending on you. So I mean, one of the things that, we good?
I wanted to ask something about the bathrooms. Just, there's a, so the city of Boston, you guys know, they have those stalls that are like self-containing. There's one down by the aquarium, I believe. And I'm wondering how, do those tie in? Do you, you probably don't know.
The composting toilets?
Yeah. So they don't tie into the system, right? They just, I'm just, I'm totally thinking outside the box, and I have no idea anything about potties, except that my children use them. So I don't know.
I don't know the operation side of them. But that's something that we will absolutely be looking into different alternatives, for sure.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I think it's really needed. I don't think we can continue to put this burden on the yacht club.
I mean, as I say, that's been in the discussion going back to.
2015?
I mean, the MAPC report, it talks about it. It's, I mean, as you know, this is, and having chaired the landing committee for eight years now, this was just such a jewel for our community, but an unneglected area of the community that just, and I'm, like, I love it. I'm, I can't tie on it, like, just, as someone who grew up there, who fished there with my dad, my father grew up right in Baker Truck, like, just, nice job.
Thank you.
Nice, I mean, you really, you brought up, it's such a historic area, and there are so many amenities there and so many reasons to visit there. I mean, who would have ever, 88 Wharf alone was a cardboard friggin' cold storage plant. There's all it was. I mean, it kept ice cream cold for 100 years. And who would have thought that it would become the residence that it is today? So I really give you, I stopped, not the last meeting, because I already knew we had gone, but I've been to several site fits. I want to thank everyone. And I know it was hard for you, because, my God, there were so many opinions and so much, so much, but look at what you've got here. So I'm thrilled to endorse this.
I unfortunately have one more thing.
Absolutely.
Actually, not unfortunately. As, I know you're trying to get out of here, but.
No, I just want, I want to get them out of here.
As, as somebody who has, has brought this up before and has driven around town, and you both live here in town, you know that everything is named after a man in town, except for one room in our town. And so I would appreciate if, when you look at the history, whatever historic history you look at, you don't forget the ladies and don't forget how important women were in all of this. So it's something that is really important to me, but not just me, to many people in our community, to show representation. And I don't think we currently do that with a lot of the ways that we name things. Everything is pretty much named after white men, just because. And so I would like to start looking at, this is something that came up in the policy committee, I would like to start looking at ways that we can also honor those that are women and people of color that have made huge strides to our community. So I would implore you to please think about that as you continue the process.
To that point, I think that would be something that we would work with the town on. That wouldn't just be.
And the historic society, and, you know, whoever else we can bring in.
There would be a collaboration on people that are more knowledgeable about that space, and then having those sort of open conversations about what that would be.
That would be great. Thank you so much for that.
We good?
We're good.
Okay. So can I have a motion? I'm looking, would someone like to make a motion to approve this concept design?
I'll make a motion to approve the concept design for the Wharf Park improvements and support their application to the CPA funding.
Do a second.
Oh, second?
Second by Mr. Cohane. This will be a roll call vote. All those that favor Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Cohane.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Congratulations. Good luck.
Great job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Item number, do you want to jump to?
She's good.
You sure? This is that time?
No.
You sure? What'd you get, furrowed? All right, so I was just thinking of you. Okay, so I'm going to move to item number six, which is discussion approval comment letter on Massport's 2022 environmental status and planning report for Logan Airport. I understand we're going to be joined on Zoom by Ms. Conrad.
She's joining now. She should be on in.
She's here.
A couple of seconds, yep.
She's gone. Oh, there she is. Good evening.
When I was being transferred over, I missed whatever you said for an introduction. So I'd be happy to say a few words about this or just answer questions, Mr. Chair, whatever your preference might be.
Listen, for the amount of time and effort you've put on this, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, just briefly then, this is a comment letter on Massport's 2022 environmental status and planning report. This type of report is not every five years, but there are other interim reports called EDRs rather than this ESPR, that the town, that they put out at one or two-year intervals. And the town has commented on these reports in the past. So this draft letter is based on the 2019 letter that the board had submitted in response to the 2017 environmental status and planning report and updated to reflect some recent developments, such as the fact that the FAA is now reviewing its noise policy, that we know that there is emerging technology called advanced air mobility. We, about a year ago, this board submitted a comment letter, both on the, the noise policy as well as the emerging technology where someday we'll probably have electric vehicles that are capable of taking off and landing vertically. So we bring some of those additional concepts and new concepts into the letter, but a lot of the discussion is similar to prior concept letters. And you can see, that's what really drives the recommendations being moved up to the front of the letter from the back of the letter and asking for a meeting with the Secretary of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So that's really the letter in a nutshell. 2022 was still a, a lower air traffic year because of the pandemic. So some of this data is, well, it's current as of 2022, it's, doesn't fully reflect all of the situation in 2024 where air traffic has more fully recovered since the pandemic.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Go ahead, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Great job with the letter. I thought it was very well done. I love the fact that you are directing them to reevaluate the noise and air pollution and try to do new studies on that. I know from being on the Board of Health that we had presented a letter back when they were looking at the 4L many years ago, and we had submitted a letter. I don't know if that's part of this packet because we were concerned about the areas that are getting overflown between elderly housing, schools, Fowl Meadow, so just some of these areas. So I'm just wondering if any of those things were put into this particular letter because there were health concerns from the Board of Health. I also like the fact that you have brought in some of the information from the community health assessment that was just released by the Board of Health. So I think that was great. And I, I just think all in all, all of the information in there is really well put together. So I want to compliment you on that. Thank you very much for putting that together in the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It's a committee effort, so it's, you know, all the members of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee had some input into this letter, as well as the town's attorney, Karis Noah, who was the person who had written the 2019 letter that this is based on. And yes, I forgot to mention, we did, we did cite and quote from the community health assessment that the Board of Health did. So that was, that was quite helpful to receive that while we were starting to work on this letter. In, in terms of the 4L letter, I haven't gone back to look at that, so it's possible that some of the areas in town that you mentioned, this letter does mention schools, parks, I don't think it mentions Fowl Meadow in particular, but it mentions parks, playgrounds, schools, densely populated areas. There are three attachments, but two of them are the board's previous letters from 2019 and 2021 on these Massport environmental planning reviews. And the third one is the comment letter from last September regarding the FAA's noise policy. So the Board of Health's letter from a few years ago regarding runway 4L is not an attachment, but I'd have to go back and look at that to see if there's anything in there that, I think the broader concepts of noise and pollution as well as parts of town that are affected are included in here. But I don't know if there's anything else in that letter that, that's not mentioned here, because this, this really was drawn from the 2019 letter.
Yeah, just in terms of different areas of town, it just might be helpful just to see what other things we put in. I don't recall off the top of my head, but I'm just thinking Fowl Meadow, we put elderly housing, schools, and we named off some areas. So it may be something that may be helpful, that's all.
We do reference senior communities, parks, playgrounds.
Yeah.
I think we say civic areas or civic buildings, homes. So generally speaking, we've covered those different types of.
Yeah, I think the reason we did mention Fowl Meadow in particular was for areas of environmental, critical environmental concern as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? We good? Katie, I just want, I mean, you've been working on this for, as long as I can remember. I mean, I don't know anyone who's given more of their personal time to this effort than you have. But what do you expect? And it's a pretty significant letter. I know tonight you involved in the 19 one and the 21 one. Do you, as well as all the other actions that we've taken as a town, do you, what do you expect for our response from this? Do you expect a meeting?
Well, what, what we suggested in this, in this draft is that we submit the comments that are due this Thursday.
Right.
And maybe in a couple of weeks, we ask the town administrator, or the board asks the town administrator, that was our suggestion, to just to, to call the secretary's office and to request a meeting. Whether it's with the secretary or staff, you know, either I think would be fine, but we, because we're reiterating a lot of comments that have not been addressed despite them being raised, not only by Milton, but by many other communities and entities over the years, this is really a time in which all of these, they're called overflight communities, meaning communities that are not right next to the airport, like East Boston or Winthrop, but are a little bit further away, but impacted by these concentrated flight paths that have been in place now for, in some cases, close to a dozen years, or approximately a dozen years, maybe even a little bit longer. So the idea would be to try to set up a meeting and we also separately are hoping that the select board can assist with getting another meeting together with Congressman Lynch and some of the state officials to try to see what we can do on the non-municipal level, but on the state or federal level.
Okay. We will do that. So entertain a motion to approve the comment letter on Massport's 2022 environmental status and planning report for Logan Airport.
So I'll make a motion that we move to approve the comment letter on Massport's 2022 environmental status and planning report for Logan Airport. So I'll make a motion that we move to approve the comment letter on Massport's 2022 environmental status and planning report for Logan Airport.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
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 Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will get that out as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before I go, could I just thank two members of our committee who stepped down and asked that the public consider serving in a volunteer capacity on the committee? There may be people who are watching, who are interested, or who know people who may be interested, but both Christopher Hart and Andrew Schmidt have stepped down from the committee. In Chris's case, he was our CAC representative, and the town moderator has appointed him to the Board of Appeals. So that's a pretty substantial time commitment, and Chris is going to continue serving the town in that capacity. And I wanted to thank him for his involvement over the last couple of years. He was not only the CAC rep, but also the Secretary of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. And Andy Schmidt has been involved in the issue for about 10 years. He's been one of the people involved from Milton who have had a lot of institutional knowledge, and he was really our resource to ask any technical questions of. And he contributed an awful lot over the years. He's the former chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, and he's relocating out of state. So we're going to lose his expertise, which is a big loss for the committee. And I just wanted to publicly thank them and also to ask if anyone is interested in serving. We have a couple of open seats, and you just need to fill out the volunteer form that's on the website, on the boards and committees page, and submit it to the select board's office, and hopefully we'll get some people who are interested in serving. So thank you very much.
Thank you to both of them. Andy was here when I arrived in 2017, and Chris came shortly after that. So as you know, this is a tough issue. I mean, I, I can't, federal level, state level, congressional leaders, other communities, I mean, I don't know how many, and I think it was Congressman Lynch who said once a long time ago, how, how hard it is to fight the government, how hard it is to, and that was, I mean, nights at the high school auditorium were packed with residents who came. So thank you to them, but thank you to you too, because I know this, how hard this is. I mean, you're climbing Mount Everest in this, you've, like, inch by inch to try and, I think of all the people you were, you were on.
There was, yes.
The come and gone. I mean, it's, it's, it still affects our community. So thank you, thank the community, thank everyone who's worked on this issue for our, for our town.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number seven is a discussion approval request for expressions of interest for 525 Adam Street, East Milton Fire Station. This was something Mr. Milano worked out for us and.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have in the air packets a draft request for expression of interest that we would release to start to gather potential proposals, not necessarily proposals, but ideas for a potential project at the East Milton Fire Station. We haven't filled out, you know, some specific details, like when it's posted, how long it'll be left, but otherwise we've filled it out for the most part. We plan to have a brief site tour. We have found all documents that give additional information about the condition of the building, so we can provide that as part of this opportunity. We have really not excluded any ideas. We haven't said we're only interested in selling. We haven't said we're only interested in leasing. We note that our broad goal is our reuse and redevelopment of the site to complement East Milton Square, that the preferences that the building, we do note there is a preference that the building be renovated and adapted to a new use, but it's not a requirement that we're open to reviewing other expressions of interest for other uses of the entire site. And note that other goals being, you know, maximizing the benefits of the town and mitigating, minimizing impacts to the neighborhood. So that's all we've really stipulated as terms of what our, the town's expectations are. And this is an initial step meant to be information gathering us for, to make that next decision around a request for proposals. Do we want to look at only a lease? Do we want to look at a sale? Do we want to require that the building stay? Do we want to not make any such requirement and just have it open-ended? This process, hopefully, if there's interest, will give us a little bit more information.
Thank you.
To guide those future decisions that are much more, much more impactful, I think, than, than this one, which is helping us gather information to shape future decisions. So that's the idea behind it. I don't know if we'll get responses if we do release it, but that's where the, where, that's what the document does now. And just in terms of an update on the East Milton Station project, I know Mr. Walsh was here. A couple of weeks ago, the Fire Station Building Committee met last night to approve some value engineering on the Fire Station, the East Milton Fire Station design, and they have approved it to go out to proceed to bidding. So that project would be, the bids would go out or be available at the end of October. We expect to have bids back in hand around the end of the calendar year and construction to start in the spring. So we would expect to be vacating this site, like he suggested, by the end of calendar year '25, potentially, if all goes according to schedule.
Why we want to do this now? At least to kind of have an idea.
Correct. Happy to take any questions or suggestions for edits to the document, but otherwise available for any thoughts or comments.
I'm good with it. So do we have a motion?
So this is just information gathering stage?
This is just information, yeah.
See who's interested in what.
Yeah. Just informational. This is what we asked him to do at the last meeting.
Yep. Sure. I'll make a motion to approve releasing the request for expressions of interest for 525 Adam Street, East Milton Fire Station.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, roll call vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yep.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Just a quick question on fire stations. Do we have any idea when this new meeting was, it's looking fairly good. Do we, do we have an idea when it opens?
The, the contractor is supposed to be onsite today to install the very last thing. That should be the last step before the building department can release a temporary certificate of occupancy, excuse me. We haven't taken the building back yet. The old building is still under the control of the contractor. We haven't put it back on our insurance. That should be happening the next couple of weeks. IT is working on outfitting the room to be available for meetings. Ideally, the goal would be to be available for hybrid meetings for any board or committee that wants to have a meeting. And then the ultimate goal, we've been working with Shane and his team at Milton TV, and they've been over there with vendors, as well as to make it available for select board, planning board, warrant committee type meetings where live television can be televised live from that room. So that is the goal that we're, we're not going to be there yet in the near term, but the room should be available hopefully by the end of this month, knock on wood.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. Item number eight, an update of school classroom needs report. This is Mr. Cohen that asked for this.
I had a really good meeting with Peter Burrows and Katie yesterday, and I also had a good meeting with Sean to go over it. It was only yesterday, late, late last night, one of them, so I'm still processing that information. But Sean's going to send me, he did a breakdown on it. He's going to send me that report. I haven't reached out to him today. I had a busy day, but basically that's where it stands at this point.
So do want to, you can comment on this a little if you want. So for those who don't know, SBA is coming out here on Tuesday to take a walking tour of the Cunningham, is it just the Cunningham? Just the Cunningham, just the Cunningham School. This is the farthest we've made it in this process. I intend to go. I'm not going to say anything, but I intend to be there just as, this is really significant in that we're talking at a, this could be a $40 million swing if we were to be lucky enough to succeed in this. Am I right? Tell me if I go wrong.
Yeah, I mean, approximately 45% reimbursement rate would that might be.
Which we're at right now, a $150 million, but just be about $40 million, which would be, I think, even more. So this would be a significant thing for the community. So I think this is really important, and I, I know how hard that this committee has worked on this to get this here, so. I don't want to use the word pride. But, but, possible.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. See? Spoken from the daughter of a roving. Go ahead.
I am. So I, I did watch last night's school building committee meeting, and it actually seems like the, I'm assuming, because I missed the last meeting, I did watch our last meeting and I read the Milton Times, which is delivered to my house. And so this is a pitch for everybody to subscribe to the Milton Times. Local journalism counts, that we're.
Even a percentage?
Huh? So, so this assessment of the school classroom needs is the assessment from two individuals from the public? Is that correct? This is not something that came out of the school building committee? Is that what this item is, number eight, on our agenda?
No. Also, look, Mr. Cohen's our representative, so I, he is more than able to take whatever info.
If that's what we're talking about, it was decided upon last night, and they proved that assessment from two individuals to be incorrect mathematically. And so I think that.
I haven't had, but it hasn't been proven. I don't know. I haven't had a chance to review it. He presented data last night that, that I got last night. I still don't have the accurate report that we went over. So I, I can't say that it proves anything.
The report that we went over is this assessment of school classroom needs report.
But I'm fine with spread with that. He's our representative on the committee. But I'm fine with spread with that. He's our representative on the committee. I'm fine. He's met with Sean. He's met with the superintendent. He's.
But he has nothing to report back.
Not right now?
Because I just got it yesterday.
He said he didn't have anything to report back.
I just got the information yesterday. As a matter of fact, the report that Sean and I went over, that he was going to send me, that I didn't bug him for today, I don't even have yet.
Okay. I must have watched, I understand, Mr. Chair, what you're saying to me. I'm just saying, I watched last night's meeting, as did many people from our community, and I believe that there was ample discussion around this. And this is something that I would like to put on a future agenda item for more discussion. As I understand your motion to me, I get it, but I think last night's meeting is very telling. And so thank you so much.
Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Like Ms. Bradley, I also watched the meeting. And, you know, just a quick point of clarification about the report that was submitted, was submitted using data from 2018 that presumed that the schools were not over capacity at the time, when in fact, they already were. So it was a pretty quick and easy identification of why the numbers were wrong. And of course, in 2019, when this report was done, they didn't clarify that, you know, this is using numbers from 2018, and the schools are already overcrowded, because I think the assumption was, well, we're doing this report, so everyone knows that the schools are overcrowded. And that, of course, is five years ago. So, you know, I always appreciate, as does everybody, when citizens volunteer their time to step up for the community. But I would also encourage folks, if they think that something isn't right, that maybe they reach out and ask questions. And I know that came up at the, at the school building committee as well. Asking questions before writing 60 pages, I think, is always a good, good tactic, and could have saved a lot of people a lot of trouble. But I don't think that there's a whole lot to talk about here, because the numbers were erroneous. And if you're curious about that, you can watch the school building committee, where they were very thoroughly reviewed and debunked. So I think that's probably all we can say. And I do want to point out, if someone's trying to interrupt me right now, I can't hear if something's happening, and everybody who's on Zoom will attest to that. I don't see a hand up, and I know that we've had problems with the Zooms in the past. I don't think I'm out of order in talking about what happened at an open meeting last night. But just want to point out that if I.
I can hear.
I'm coming across.
We can't hear us.
He's saying he can't hear us.
I can't hear him.
All right. All right, Mr. Zoll, I've got it. So, all right, look at, this is, Mr. Cohen is our representative on that committee. He just got there. Any, any citizen, I don't can submit whatever they want. He's reviewing it. I'm fine with it. I'm sure at some future meeting, we're going to be having additional discussions. And the only other thing I wanted to add is Tuesday, because this is very, very significant. Whether we prevail, I do not know. But if we do prevail, this is, when we talk about strategy and being strategic in this, as I've noted many times, just me, and this is my final comment, this is an amount of money we're asking. It's never, ever been, ever been approached. So it's the path that we took that helped us succeed 20 years ago, and I strongly encourage everyone to support the school building committee in this initiative that they're going through on, and the no public schools on Tuesday. You good?
Hmm?
Okay. Item number nine, discussion update, home rule petition for senior means tested property tax exemption, Mr. Zoll? Oh, no, Mr. Zoll. Sorry, Mr. Zoll. You're off the hook for that one.
I mean, I can talk about it, but.
No, you're on. No, that's all right.
I'd do a much better job.
Mr. Milano?
Sure. More of an update. There's no immediate urgency to this now. We had just had talked about it in concept at our prior meeting. We did put it into writing, mostly by copying and pasting what other communities have done. So it's not a lot of original work here. Can't take any credit for it. Nick Connor's idea and helped pull it together. But just to refresh everybody's memory, the idea is to bring forward a home rule petition that would require approval from the town meeting, and then from the legislature to allow the town to roll out a new exemption for seniors who qualify for the senior circuit break through their income taxes. It would be a local exemption on property taxes. We would track with that program in terms of eligibility in order to ease the administrative burden on our staff. The kind of adjust, things that can be adjusted locally, that are up for discussion and approval from the board, would be the duration that somebody has to live in the town. Right now, it's penciled in at 10 years, which has been the trend in other, other versions of this that we've looked at from other communities. And then the exemption amount that is allowed for up to a maximum. Right now, we propose to up to, allow the select board to decide between 50% and 100% of the match, of the amount of the benefit that you receive on your income taxes. So that's, those are the real two major pieces that can be adjusted locally. But otherwise, we want to track with how the other communities have approached it, and to make sure that administrative burden on our end is, is not too overwhelming. So I, if there's questions or further questions, since people had some time to think about it some more, happy to take those. But otherwise, that's just kind of an update for where things stand. And I don't have anything else on it.
Mr. Zoll? I see a hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. So, Nick, I know in our last meeting, Mr. Milano, again, this is a fantastic idea, I think, to save some of our most vulnerable senior citizens at a very, very low cost to the rest of the town. I think.
You want to say save them some money, not just save, not save them, save them some money.
Save them some money. Save them some money, you know, with, as much as we can do on the select board, I think. We had discussed, Mr. Milano, I think, the, that this can, process can take up to 18 months. And so there was an idea that having a town meeting for this purpose in the fall, so that we could get the ball rolling on this, was correct. Could you speak a little bit more to, I'm not sure if you've sort of, sort of gamed out the way that a calendar would work, so that we could get a warrant together and get that, get that ball rolling?
I think, I think in looking at the calendars, as long as, I don't think it would, if there's a town meeting before the annual, I think that's helpful to get it to the legislators. You know, before the session were to start would be great, but I think as earlier in the new, in the new legislative session would be helpful. And I think in the first couple of months of the new year, to get it approved by town meeting in that timeframe, I think is sufficient. I don't know that it's necessarily, it would be a huge difference between, say, December versus February. I don't know that that's a major difference, especially since these are becoming more common. So I think the legislature is more familiar with these, and the committees are more familiar with these versions of home rule petitions that have been emerging from cities and towns.
So no motion? Is, there's no action on this?
If the board is accepting of it, we can certainly get approval of that tonight, but it's ultimately a warrant article, so we would have to get approval to put it on a warrant at a future meeting. So there's nothing tonight that needs approval, unless there's issues or concerns about anything that we're starting to put together.
The members are all right. It's not odd for a motion. I'll just leave it to make a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
Yeah, I appreciate what Mr. Milano said about the, the timing there, but I don't see why we would wait until January or February, when we could have a town meeting in November, December, where we're all, we're used to having a special town meeting at the end of the year. So unless there was some reason not to have a town meeting, it would be very nice to have a quick, short town meeting with, with a limited number of articles, so we could get all the business done in, in a single day, but maybe a boy can dream. But to me, it seems like that's something that select board, if we're, if we're truly concerned about the elderly and the poor of Milton, which I believe that we all are, we should move on that quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. We have to move on to it. Ms. Musto, go ahead.
Thank you. I think it would be good to hear a little bit more from Nick Connors, again, just on, you know, if we did the 50% versus 100%, what numbers we're looking at. And certainly, we want to do something. So I just want to have a little bit more clarity on that.
Okay. We can, we'll generate those numbers and share them with the board.
Perfect. Thank you.
To give a sense of the potential benefit and cost.
That's great. Thank you.
Would it be possible, sorry, I don't have a hand up. Would it be possible to get what a draft article for the warrant would look like as well? I apologize, Mr. Chair, for speaking out of turn.
That's all right. I'll make, we'll add that to it.
Yep.
Is that all right? You had comments there? We'll just make sure that happens. Mr. Zoll? I'm answering you.
I'm sorry, did you?
I just, I just asked him to add that, so we will do that.
Yeah, we can take care of that. That's, that's the easiest part about this, is just getting into that form. But we'll, we'll get it in front of town council to just approve the article, article format, so it's, it's truly ready to go once a town meeting is scheduled.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's patience with me. It would be my preference to be in Milton right now, but that's not what my work life has, has planned for me.
It's okay. You got a pass. Okay, I'd like to move on. We have someone here that I'm trying to get out. So we're going to move to item number 10, discussion approval bond anticipation notes for water main improvements. Am I in the right spot here?
Yes, that's correct. Just in terms of a little bit of background, the, we typically don't issue real debt for the, shouldn't say real debt. We typically don't issue outside of the MWRA.
So why don't we, do we want, I'd like to welcome our treasurer, who's been waiting patiently, Ms. McCaffrey, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we typically use MWRA borrowing. In this time, we didn't have that funding available at the, at the time. So we've done a short-term note, and I'll let Joanna explain a little bit more of what that means and what the cost is.
The 0% of the enduring money?
Ultimately, that's what will fund this, but in the short, in the next few months, we're borrowing it from the market.
Welcome.
Hi.
Why?
Thanks for having me. So yeah, like Nick said, this is really just kind of a bridge. We don't anticipate the funding or the, receiving the money from MWRA until the fall. So what we did was, we put out to bid a 90-day, 90-day note to bridge that time period. So this, what we were looking to do today was to, to present to you a vote to award a bond anticipation note. So in anticipation of those, that money, which we'll come back to you on, it is that 0% funding, and these are for water rehab improvements. And so the, the, the note went out for sale, or sorry, for bid today, and we did receive two bids. The winning bid was the lowest net interest cost of just under 5%. So, so we, we decided to accept that, and we hope that you vote to agree to that. So the, the amount is $989,692. And that would be just 90 days, so it would be maturing in December.
Do we need that number in the, in the motion?
We presented, there is a draft motion separately from.
I have the wording. If some, does somebody want it? You don't want it?
Yeah. There you go.
Oh, my God.
I got it, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
That's the name.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, any questions or comments? Otherwise, I was going to make a motion.
And then, and, sorry, before you, before you just make that motion, yes, I do have some paperwork for you to sign afterwards.
That's fine.
Yes. It's here. It is here. And it's okay. I know Mr. Zoll is, is attending remotely, and we just need a majority, so we're okay with what's here.
Sorry about that, Joanna.
That's okay.
Can you be here by 8 o'clock tomorrow morning? So, I'm going to make a motion to the select board to vote award bond anticipation notes, date of sale, September 10, 2024. Voted to award $989,692. Town of Milton, Massachusetts Bond Anticipation Notes dated September 18, 2024, and maturing December 18, 2024, to Oppenheimer and Company, Seed and Company, at a net interest cost of 4.979%. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Do you want to take a quick recess and sign these while?
Sure.
That would be great.
We're going to take a quick recess here for two minutes, and then we'll sign these so you can go home. Standby 30 seconds. Good evening. Welcome back. Thank you for your patience. Item number 11 is a request for one-day liquor licenses, three of three requests. The first one is for MMB Wakefield Alberitem, 1455 Brushell Road. For number one is the tree climbing championship, Saturday, October 5, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Second was an, is an Oktoberfest, Oktoberfest event, Saturday, October 26, 2024, from 2:00 to 5:00. The second request, item B, is Catholic parishes of the Blue Hills, St. Pius, the 10th Parish, 101 Walcott Road, a designer press bingo, October 5, 2024, 6:00 to 9:00, 30:00 PM. And the third one, which is historic New England, it's Eustace Estate, 1424 Cantav, museum as muse, panel discussion Tuesday, September 24, 2024, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And the motion is ready. If someone would like to read it.
I'll move to approve the one-day liquor licenses as listed on the agenda.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Say hello, Mr. Cohen. All those in favor, roll call vote. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item number 12, discussion approval meeting minutes. The move would be, the motion would be to approve the amended meeting minutes dated August 6, 2024.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Zoll, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have, I have a quick edit to propose, and I understand sometimes my edits won't always be accepted. But I would like to, on item number five, which hopefully is also on page number five, there is the third paragraph to the bottom. I would like to amend it to say Chair Wells restored to courtroom when an exchange of views became heated. And then the amended part is, in part because of difficulties with the Zoom platform. That would be my, that would be my one change.
So why don't we do this? I can barely hear him, and I don't think Lynn can hear that at all. I'm going to defer this to the next, no?
He's basically wanting to say that because of Zoom, he could not hear you. That's all he wants to add.
And that's in item number five? Did you hear that, Lynn? So we're going to amend it?
She got it. She said, yes.
You got it? Okay. Got it, Mr. Zoll?
Thank you.
Okay, so, did you, someone make a vote? Do we want a motion?
I will make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Bradley, second, as amended.
As amended, correct.
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Musto, roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself. So your names. Thank you. Item 13, town administrators report. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of good events in the last couple of weeks, and a couple more coming up. So I was at the open house for the library on Thursday. It's a great event, a couple of good food trucks. Ms. Musto, I know, was there as well. My son was with me as well, and we spent some time reading some books in the library, so can't beat that. I also attended the State of the Library presentation last night by the library trustees, the Friends of the Library, and the Library Foundation, I think, was the other entity. Yes, those are the three entities. Library Director Will Adamzick did a great job talking through what the library's accomplished over the past year, talked a little bit about future challenges and their strategic goals envisioned for the library. I followed that up at the, by attending the Fire Station Building Committee, and I had mentioned that, where they had approved, moving forward into bidding for the East Milton Fire Station project. I was unable to attend the first Friday on Friday last night, or last week in East Milton. Sorry to have missed it, but it sounded like it was well-attended and went off okay. I'll let others be the judge of that, who were there. The Council on Aging is having their fall fundraiser on Saturday, October 5, here at the Council on Aging. That's 9:00 AM to noon. There's a couple of associated events to go along with that, so add it to your calendar. The Health Department is planning in a forum in October, at the end of October, on the 30th, related to the settlement monies for opioid settlements, and how the town can go about putting those monies to work. So throw that on your calendar. And I believe that will be here at the Council on Aging. We'll put out information about it ahead of time. Some really unfortunate news for the town. I don't know how much this has gotten out there yet, but DPW Director Chase Berkeley will be leaving his position with the town at the end of this month to take over as the chief of operations for the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. Chase came from Boston Water and Sewer Commission, and he's been hired back. So Milton was successful in stealing him away, and they're successful in stealing him back. So it is really unfortunate for us. He's been a great steward of the department and added a lot to culture across the town, across the department. You know, we try to do the best we can every day. I think that department does particularly well. You know, we can't always solve every constituent service request. We try to. I think, I can't count on two hands the number of times I've reached out to Chase to ask him to look into something, and when we follow up on it, and he said, I'm just leaving their house. I'm just walking out of their house. I just left this person. So that kind of direct, one-on-one attention to detail, to, to problems will be missed. We obviously hope to replace him, but capture his same kind of level of dedication to Milton would be great. It's kind of a small world. I first met him by going on walks around my neighborhood. We don't live too far apart in West Roxbury. My son, when he was little, would always stop at their house, because there was always something to play with in the yard or in the driveway. And so we got talking, and eventually, we became colleagues in Milton. So I will still see him around. Lucky for me, unfortunate for Milton, but just wanted to take the opportunity to thank him for his service. him for his service. Couple of weeks left that he still has to work with us. So he's not going anywhere quite yet. If you haven't seen him, and we'll send him on his way with thanks.
I think I think we should bring him in on the 24th and thank him.
Oh, there are a few agenda items he has to do before he leaves. So he'll be here.
I think I talked to him today, and I'm with you. I remember the day, then he thought he was Bill Belichick and that he'd signed like a top free agent. You won't believe him. But everything you've said about Chase is true. And so I think I'd like to schedule him for a meeting on the 24th.
Sure.
Let's put him up early. Swing, come in right away and get him on air.
You have one?
No, we have a meeting on the 24th. That's a typo. That was a typo. We have a meeting on the 24th. The other second person to say that to me. Say, we're not meeting on this. No, no, we're meeting on the 24th. So if we could do that.
Yeah, no, definitely. I will. I will do that. I have a couple of he has a couple of agenda items before he's going to be allowed to leave that he has to get handled on the 24th. See, he was coming in for work and for thanks. So it'll be a good opportunity. Two other things. Just wanted to acknowledge Deputy Chief O'Neill had retired early this summer, and the department has made a few changes. In the wake of that, we reached an agreement with the Superior Officers Association to reduce the department by one lieutenant position, thereby fulfilling two deputy chief positions. So there have been two promotions and then cascading promotions as a result. So Lieutenant Michael Collins and Lieutenant Mark Elba have been promoted to deputy chief. Sergeant Brendan Douglas has been promoted to lieutenant, and Officer Patrick Nie has been promoted to sergeant. So those promotions took effect at the beginning of September. So we congratulate each of them on that.
So maybe the same.
Okay.
Maybe the same on the 24th. To make four promotions at once is very unique in the jury.
Happy to.
Maybe we bring them early on on the 24th.
Will do.
I don't know if she's sworn them in yet. If she's maybe we bring them out. I don't just just a thought.
Yeah, no, thanks. We'll do that. And then lastly, my wife is due on September 23 with our third child.
Really important. You according to?
No.
I will try to take a few weeks away. I will be available over the next two weeks. If anybody needs anything, try to get me before the 23rd. Obviously, I'm not going too far, but I'll be around. I'll be available by email. Nick Connors, Lynn, Carl Afeedy, HR Director, will be available for assistance in that time span. But I will be MIA for a couple of weeks from Milton and then hope to ease back into it from there with a third child at home. So appreciate it. That was my update.
Chase and Chase. Chase and Chase is what he's doing. I have one question for the Town Administrator, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So it was recently brought to my attention that something that passed at a town meeting has not been implemented yet, and that has to do with recordings of committees. The what I have learned is that it has to be passed by the legislature before our boards will actually implement this recording. I don't understand why that is. So could you walk me through where we are with that? And what is the process for making sure that this happens? Because it's something the town meeting did vote for.
The town, yes, it's been approved by town meeting. Any bylaw needs approval from the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, and that is what we're waiting on.
So it's the Attorney General, not the legislation, not the legislature?
Oh, sorry. Yes, that's one good clarification. It's the Municipal Law Unit to confirm that the bylaw is not illegal in any ways.
Right. And who are we speaking to about that? Because it's now September. That happened in May.
They typically take the the duration to and they can extend it as well if they need to. They haven't yet.
When is it due?
It should be, I believe it's the end of this month that their initial timeline lapses. So I will get an update from the town clerk and provide an update. But between that, the other bylaw was the the stretch energy code. So it's the same story for both. Neither have yet been approved by the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit.
Right.
And that's what we're waiting on at this point.
Okay. It's a shame that our committees are not following what the town meeting members asked for without this ruling from the Attorney General.
They can't. There's just no way.
No, they can. They can. They can make absolutely. They can. But that's just their choice not to. And so we will wait for the Attorney General's ruling on that later this month.
Yes, and I'll get the date, and I'll keep the board updated from there.
Good?
I'm good now.
Okay, sure. Okay. Okay, you're good?
Yep, all set. Thank you.
Chair's report, I just want to I'll be very brief. I want to congratulate the organizers, the Mac, the people in the Mac, Joan and Kevin, all the musicians, a lot of us were all there, the event that was held on Manny Park on Sunday, on Sunday, Friday night. My days are frigging upside down. On Friday night, the chamber, everyone who came, it was very well attended. It was a great first event of that, and I can definitely know that they're already planning to do it again next year. And our last minute suggestion for them definitely helped, and that was a success as well. So thank you for that. And this was a great it was a great event. It really was very well attended. Public comment response. We didn't have any public comment tonight. Future meeting dates, Tuesdays and September 24. We're already in today. Not September 24?
No.
No.
The 24th is a Thursday.
It is two weeks from today. No, it's the 24th. It's two weeks from today.
It's the 24th, two weeks from today.
The 24th of September.
Yeah, 24th of September, yes.
I'm looking at October.
No, I I missed it and not on the agenda.
8:22.
October, yeah, 8:22.
Right, yeah. Under future item agendas, there is there's an item that I'm going to put on the agenda that one is that the Climate Action Committee, they want to come in and give their report. So they're going to come in that day. And the other thing that I mentioned to Mr. Milano and I've mentioned to them is I've I've been looking at communities. One of the issues that we deal with here environmentally, you know, we hear a lot of complaints about traffic, and people notice what they think is the speed issue. They very rarely understand how significant a volume issue we have here is. And having chaired this traffic commission for 10 years, it's something that I learned and think about every day. But so the Commonwealth has enacted legislation that allows for what's called LS vehicles, low speed vehicles. And these are electric vehicles, like a glorified golf cart, that have all the amenities of a car, but they're electric within the Commonwealth. And I've already gone to a couple of communities, Marshfield being one, where they're really being used a lot and to the point that some communities are even looking at having specify specific parking areas where like if you look at just one of our lots, say Lot C, which in East Milton is the lot that runs along Granite Avenue, and you re-space that from, say, 25 cars to 40 LS vehicles, you did the same at schools, churches, things like that. They can only be driven on on road. They can't be driven on a highway, but they can be driven on local roads, and they can't go on a road greater speed than, I think it's 30 miles an hour. But it's definitely something that is taking off in this in the electric. You plug it into your house. You don't have to upgrade it like you would if you go on an electric vehicle. And granted, you may not be able to drive it on a snowy day. And, you know, we don't get snowy days anymore, but after frost isn't heat. I was I was shocked at some of the amenities that they had, but they're they're under $10,000. They're cheap. I looked at the high end when it was it was only $8,200. And I was like, it was a four passenger. And I'm like, and I just, you know, I've studied East Milton Square on more days than I can count, especially Saturdays and Sundays and like outside the front of any of the schools. And I think about how many parents, especially moms and dads, who drive kids around this town all day long, how much we could perhaps significantly impact our congestion. So I do want to put that on. And it's not I'm just thinking, I did talk to Chase about it. I talked to Nick. I did talk to Alex about it. Just it's something that perhaps we, like other communities, should start to look at because we definitely have a congestion issue in this town. What did you call them? They're called LS, low speed vehicles.
Do you need a regular driver's license to drive?
Yes, you do. You do. Yeah. So it is.
So like seniors who have given up their license would have to re-up their license to drive around?
Yes. It's not I don't think it's like a moped where you can just get the sticker, and I don't think you have to have a driver's license. This actually have a but I was looking at I was looking at a six passenger in Dennisport on last Friday, and it was, I mean, it was I mean, you see people go in the grocery store, and I'm like, I just stand on Granite Avenue, Bassett Street, more days than I can count. And I say, if we could just find a way to just the parking issue alone that we have in all of our business districts.
It's a great idea, especially for seniors.
Yes, absolutely. Like.
My dad pays an arm and a leg in Lyft and Uber.
There you go.
And this might be, but now I have to go get him a license again. But this is a great idea, Mr. Wells, Chair Wells. This is a great idea. I love it.
Thank you.
Are we still on future agenda meeting items?
Yeah, that was just mine. What do you have?
I want to talk about the school bill.
Yeah, I get that. So that's definitely going to happen. Let's see what happens. I definitely want to bring Sean in after Tuesday to talk about that as well.
We should do this for next meeting because we've already we've already been bumped back a month, Mr. Chair, according to some emails that were received today. So you're on them.
Okay.
So I'd like to make this happen sooner than later, if it's okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, given that, then, item IT pursuit, we're going to go into executive session. I want to make a motion to enter an executive session and consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located on Jill Kathleen Lane based on my belief. The discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the select board. The board will recess an executive session and will return to open session. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself. We are adjourned. Good evening. Welcome back. This is the end of our 20 September, stay September or 10, 2024 meeting. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, I miss Musto. All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you all. Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you.